Hi, my name is Yelena Andreva. I'm a sophomore at Peoria High School and the president of the Peoria High Tomorrow We Vote Club. I'd like to thank all of you for attending today's debate. Thank you to Tomorrow We Vote for hosting this debate. And a special thank you to our candidates for taking time out of their schedules to be here today. Unfortunately, Mr. Johnson and Ms. Guardado couldn't come today.
And my name is Lurisa Andreva. I'm also a sophomore at Peoria High School. And I'm the vice president of the Tomorrow We Vote Club. And as you might have guessed, I am Yelena's twin sister. And I would also like to thank the candidates for attending today's debate. And I just wanted to say that we appreciate candidates who are willing to listen and engage with high school kids and young voters. We are going to try to keep this debate informal and are eager to hear from each of you. At this time, we would like our candidates to introduce themselves and give a brief statement explaining why you are running for Phoenix City Council. We'll just go in alphabetical order if that's okay with everyone. Mr. Garcia?
Hello, everyone, and thank you so much for having us. I think this is a great debate and a great forum. Again, my name is Carlos Garcia and I'm running for District 8, City Council, Phoenix City Council. I was born in Mexico. I came as a child. I grew up undocumented in the U.S. I'm fortunate enough to gain my papers as a teenager. But for the entirety of my adult life, I've actually been doing community organizing. I've been, for the last nine years, the director of an organization called Puente. I'm in this journey with my wonderful partner Alexis and our two children, my son Shimon, who's 12, and my daughter, who's two and a half. And also with an amazing team. I think part of this campaign, and it's, you know, obviously, we're running to put people first, and we have an agenda, and we have all these reasons why we're running for city council. We need change. We need to shake things up a little bit. But it's also been a place where we wanted to be intentional about folks growing, whether it's canvassers, feel, anyone that's part of the campaign is also learning. And so I've enjoyed that experience, regardless of what happens next Tuesday. We're five days away from the election. I think the process has been really fulfilling, and it's been amazing to watch folks in the campaign growing into their work.
Thank you. Ms. Guevara?
Sure, of course. I'm gonna start with "Good afternoon." My name is Vania Guevara. I'm currently serving as the District 5 representative, which encompasses a little bit of Central Phoenix up, but mostly the Maryville area going into as far west as Phoenix goes. Having been a candidate since, can you hear me okay? Since October 2017 and also having the privilege to serve on the council, we've been able to really draw light and highlighting the beauty and resilience of a hard-working-class district. I think as candidates, we have a responsibility to frame issues in a way that talks positively of the communities we love, that we're trying to help improve and represent, and to really incorporate the community members as a part of the campaign, the governing process. I decided to run because at a very young age, I saw my mom get involved in our community. And despite her limited English-speaking skills at the time, I was very inspired by her involvement, and it literally transformed the neighborhood that we lived in. And so, having been inspired by that, I decided to do it. And I honestly, like, I've been reflecting a lot this last week, leading up to next Tuesday, the big election day. It's such a privilege to even have the opportunity to run for office. My mom crossed borders to get here. My dad started working when he was six. So when I think of all this, I'm sorry, I get emotional every time. I feel so much privileged and I feel so blessed to be a council member for West Phoenix. But to realize the dream that I've had since I was a kid is something that I'm so grateful for and something that I'm committed to ensuring that little girls who look like me... To ensuring that young women of color who look like me have the opportunity to one day be on top and to run for office. So this campaign, this seat belongs to the people, it belongs to District 5, and it's a place where people are ensured to have a voice, to feel like they're heard, and that they're a part of the policymaking process. And so for far too long, West Phoenix has been under-resourced and underserved. So it's just time that we continue to put ourselves on the map and to make sure that people, like I said, are a part of the growth and the development. Phoenix is growing fast, and it's getting expensive. I got priced out of my hometown, and I never want any family to experience homelessness or to not be able to grow in the community that they were raised in. So I'm committed to working with youth. Youth engagement is a policy priority for me. I was a volunteer teacher at a juvenile detention center during law school. And when you have 11, 12, 13-year-olds in jail, that's on us. That's a problem. That's our problem, and that's something that I'm committed to being proactive and making sure to help address so that our young folks are involved. Our campaign team is comprised of folks from, of young kids from West Phoenix. We pay them. We're investing back into our community. And that's a win. That's creating impact, and that's empowering our community to be further involved in the electoral process. And that's just the beginning. So I'm so excited that you're all here, that you're a part of this process. And if you ever have thought about running for office, between Carlos and I, our wealth of knowledge and experience in learning how to file or fundraise and how to organize, I think you'd be in good hands. So please don't hesitate to reach out to us should that be something you're thinking about, and if it's not, please consider it.
Thank you, candidates. We're going to get started with the debate, and we'd like to hear from each of you on the questions put forth. In order to get through as many questions as possible, please limit your answers to two minutes. We will let you know when your time is almost up. John is going to serve as our timekeeper. Thank you, John, for helping us out today.
If students have any questions, anytime, they can just come up and ask. First, let's talk about school safety. We are the lockdown generation. Gen Z has never known a time without regular school shootings. It is something that weighs heavily on our generation. Can you summarize how you would address school safety, Ms. Guevara?
Sure. And I think the conversation has to start in defining what safety really means for our communities. Safety means that we have policies in place that make sure that our families, our students, our teachers have the economic and educational resources to be successful. But yet, given that we're in a generation gun safety, gun law, I think that's something that has to be addressed. While it's not immediately addressed at the city level, that's something that I would definitely be committed to working with our state legislature and anyone to help address the issue of violence on campus. But I think it's making sure that you can walk onto your school campus and feel proud of who you are, feel like it's a welcoming space for yourself and your family. And I think incorporating getting involved with the school boards, whether starting from elementary all the way up to high school, and just figuring out a way where, if we're gonna talk about certain policy changes, what are we doing to incorporate or include people who are directly affected by those policies into the process and to have a seat at the table? And I think that's where it always has to start. Like, I have no one to walk into any other space to say, like, what I think has to be done to get things to be changed or be done differently. I think we have to start with how folks talk about safety and moves directly impacted. But yeah, that's something I'm committed to working towards to helping achieve.
Thank you so much. Okay, so, yeah. Along with the issues of school safety comes the question about the impact of increasing police presence on our campuses. Some like the idea of additional SROs, Student Resource Officers, or others prefer the approach of expanding funding for school counselors and psychologists. What is your preference and why, Mr. Garcia?
We saw last week, we saw a hero, forgetting the young man's name, in Colorado, who ran after a shooter, right? We saw the family come out, and we have to grieve with them. And I think we all grieve every time that happens. And we always hear the thoughts and prayers, and we always hear other people trying to find solutions. And I think it starts with our communities having these conversations of what's happening. And in order to have those conversations, in order to have support for the young folks, we need more services. We need more counselors. We need more folks that help us out, especially low-income, people of color neighborhoods. We need that, not more policing. I'm proud to be a part of, with Puente, a campaign we've had over the last two years, and it's called "Cops at the Campus." And we've seen study after study show that police have a bias, that police treat younger folks, especially younger folks of color, in different ways. And we've had those stories here. We've heard them in all the Phoenix Union High Schools. As a city of Phoenix, we're responsible for those officers. So when these SRO MOUs are made, the district or the state, no one is responsible nor has the supervision of these officers, but City of Phoenix. And so I think it's our responsibility. And as the City of Phoenix, we need to make sure that the proper training is done for officers outside of schools. But I stand completely against SROs being inside of schools and these two things actually being merged together. I think they're two different issues. If people don't know, SROs are actually instructed not to engage an active shooter. And so to use that excuse to have SROs on campus is not right. And SROs should definitely not be on campus as disciplinarians.
Thank you. Ms. Guevara?
I think responsible leadership requires that we lead with services in addressing any basic human need, whether that's safety, whether that's making sure that we have access to resources. I definitely agree that we need to have more investments in mental health providers. I don't know how that maybe that's working through our state legislature, through our school boards. There's still a lot of confusion regarding the roles of SROs, what they can or they can't do. But again, having seen so many young people locked up in jail, I think we need to invest more in making sure that we have options for a lot of our young folks. What I learned is that the traditional academic setting isn't for everybody. There were kids in there who, you know, couldn't be in a classroom for six hours a day due to whatever, for whatever reasons, learning disabilities or just preference and styles of learning. And I think we need to do better of offering resources, such as like apprenticeship programs, vocational trainings, in our schools. And really, like, I think it's important that we talk about mental health and just knowing that none of these are deserving of having law enforcement be the solution to addressing these issues. And so I want to see more investment in services, as was previously mentioned. However, the city could be helpful with that. Maybe it's redirecting SROs if there should be a role to run. A lot of it isn't so much the City of Phoenix, it's the school districts that hire City of Phoenix policing. So that could go back to the school boards determining whether that's really the best use of their money in terms of how they're investing in their students. But yeah, with that, we still have, we're accountable regarding the actions of officers and what it really means for young people. And again, I want to invest in time, heart, and energy to make sure that young people feel like they can safely go to school and get the help they need that doesn't involve any interaction with law enforcement.
Thank you. Next, let's talk about the environment. A recent UN biodiversity report gives a grim picture. They report that 1 million species face extinction if we do not address the issue of climate change. What is your plan to help heal our environment? Mr. Garcia?
I think within those species is us, right? I think climate change is real. And unfortunately, in our two districts, District 5 and District 8, is where you have the worst conditions for our communities. In District 8, one of the stats I've been repeating throughout this campaign is south of I-17, there's 10 years less life expectancy for people that are there. And so there's a lot that contributes to this, right? It's from heat islands, from food deserts, from access to healthcare, there's a lot of things. And it's unfortunate, my opponent's not here, I don't think it was, for whatever reason, he's not here, because I think this is where we differ a little. He was there for 12 years. He had the opportunity to create more green spaces. He had the opportunity to fix some of these things and really look at the health expectancy as a measure. I keep saying that if we achieve anything while we're office, while we're in city council, is reducing that number. It is not okay, as someone that's raising my children in District 8, to know that they're gonna live 10 years less than children who live above I-17 just because of where we live. And I'm committed to fighting and making sure that we erase that number and that our children's lives matter just as much as the rest of Phoenix.
Thank you. Ms. Guevara?
I think walkability and access to public transportation also plays a significant role in climate change and environmental justice. Representing a district that's predominantly working class, there are people in my district get up at, I've said this repeatedly, 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning to get to a bus stop, to get to the east part of the city, to get to work, to clean houses, to build the hotels. And so for me, it's beyond, it's a need, beyond it being an environmental plus to, you know, we have less cars on the road. But I think it's something the City of Phoenix directly have an impact on in terms of the conditions of our water. You know, we're doing everything possible to avoid a drought, given that we're in a desert. And there's systems in place, we're good. I sit on the Water Infrastructure Sustainability Subcommittee. And so that's something that was constantly, the city's getting ahead of. We have our Public Works Department that picks up your trash and is doing a good job, actually, of educating folks on what you can throw away, what you can, the importance of recycling. But I definitely think there's room for improvement and opportunities to do more. And just, like I said, as Phoenix continues to grow and develop, we need to make sure that we have walkable streets and that our streets are safe so that people feel safe and like they can walk on them and not worry about cars speeding and making sure that our streetlights are working so that families feel like they can go out for a neighborhood stroll in the evening. But yeah, I definitely agree that you can't just, you can't ignore the fact that climate change is happening and that it's impacting predominantly communities of color. And if we're not at the forefront of that, it's not gonna be a good situation. So, but again, it's educating people. We have organizations like Chispa, Sonap, who's directly working in Maryville with our residents. And people need to learn more about the impact of environmental issues as it affects their everyday life. But we as leaders also have a role to play in making sure that our communities are aware of this issue.
Thank you. So, living in an area which is prone to droughts, what is your plan to ensure we have enough water resources for our citizens, Ms. Guevara?
Sure. There are actually, we have a water department dedicated to making sure that we're in compliance with rules and regulations along with other cities. There's a lot of technical terms that I'm not gonna pretend to know or know off the top of my head. But there's, we've been in a position where for the last 20 years have survived a growing population and have maintained the same usage of water. It's just a matter of making sure that we're not wasting water. When you see water leaks, we want to report those right away. But I know there are systems in place that currently exist to make sure that that's avoided. Unfortunately, I don't have the exact system or numbers or plans in place. But I fully would love to connect you to our water department director and anyone in the City of Phoenix who is more knowledgeable in the exact way that we're working on that. So you'll have to excuse me, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
So I think it's learning how to use less water as a community. I think it's really figuring out how we support each other, how we actually plant vegetation as a city that is from this region, that uses less water. We all see the beautiful palo erdas with the yellow flowers out there. I think we could plant more of those or less of other species that take up more water. And then I keep just looking, you know, kind of piggybacking on the last question, of contamination. So we have a lot of, the water banks, a lot of the water that's being stored is actually in District 8, and it has all piping. It's potentially contaminated itself because it's been around landfills. And so truly looking at how do we conserve that water and then also make sure that it's healthy for our communities. One thing we can't do is allow some of these water bottle companies to come and just take our water and sell it and have corporations pay the same amount that we pay for our water and then go around the country and sell it. And so I think it's, again, our priority and what it says on the back of our T-shirts is to put people first. And that's what we need to make sure, there is healthy water and that water's available for the right reasons to take care of our communities. Deeply believe that water is life, and so, I don't know.
Thank you so much. Healthcare is another pressing issue for our community. What is your plan to expand affordable access to healthcare for everyone in their city, Mr. Garcia?
So again, it's one of those issues where the city doesn't have complete control. But I do think, and recognizing along with the other issues, that we could play a larger role in helping our friends out at the Capitol and making sure that we're there lobbying for the people in our city to make sure that there's accessible healthcare. One example, in our district is, the Levine District, for example, didn't have an ambulance until this year. And so it was someone, literally, that worked for the city that had to wait 40 minutes for an ambulance. That's made it to where now there's gonna be in this budget ambulance available for that part of the city. And so I think, in the same way, when I've had to take my children, or our family used to go to emergency room, the Tempe St. Luke's Hospital is the nearest one to our home. And so when I've had to run out of the house in emergency with my kid's appendix or something like that, it's literally driving all the way to Tempe to get that healthcare. And so I think, again, it's not all in our hands, but the things that are in our hands is how development grows, how we work with other legislative bodies to make sure that healthcare is available. And some of the things we can do is what I talked earlier. Our two districts also have, you all are doing great. As pointed out back there, threw me off a little bit. But yeah, so I think it's a matter of working together with other legislative bodies and making sure that the things we can control, which are the food deserts, how we develop, how we support our community, that we're there, we're thinking of our community's healthcare before profits of corporations and such.
Thank you. Ms. Guevara?
Yeah, just to echo Carlos' statements about healthcare being outside the purview of the City of Phoenix, that doesn't mean there isn't a way we can help influence accessibility and affordability of healthcare. We've previously partnered with organizations to provide free dental checkups for students. Although relationships where there's healthcare, free shots for kids, free flu shots, I think there's a way, but I think that's just a Band-Aid in terms of what needs to happen in the long term. But there's ways, there should not ever be any dead ends at any level of leadership and representation. But there's definitely something that has to change, especially when our healthcare system is constantly being combated against other people. We need to be able to come up with a solution to work with our state legislature and with our representatives in Congress to address it. And even, we have a platform to talk about it, and we should definitely use that as it's within our power. But I know there are ways to partner with amazing community organizations to provide free, high-quality access to dental and healthcare for working families. So I'm committed to continuing to do that.
Thank you. Immigration is certainly an issue on everybody's mind. As a border state, we are in a unique position to examine the issue of immigration. So talk to us about your immigration plan, particularly as it pertains to young people receiving DACA benefits. Mr. Garcia?
It's the work I've been doing for the last 16 years. I think when it comes to the city, even though it's out of our purview, we need to speak out and make sure. We had a fourth child die in immigration custody yesterday. It was a three-year-old. I think that's important for us to acknowledge that, and even though we're not a decision-making body over it, make sure we bring attention to the issue. At the City of Phoenix, there's a couple of things we could do. We can make sure that officers are trained to recognize the DACA recipients in particular, their documents. And I honestly believe that the City of Phoenix Police Department should not be doing Donald Trump's dirty work and should not be enforcing immigration laws. That's not what they should be doing. And then second, we, there's actually a city ID. There's a policy that was passed two years ago, but the city hasn't found a way to fund it or to protect people obtaining the ID. And so the concept of a city ID is that anyone that's a resident of the city can gain this ID. And unfortunately, a lot of the times, how people end up in immigration custody is because they can't provide a valid identification. So this would settle that. And again, with another story, the young woman who was found today, Melen, who's 19 years old, who's, her body was found. There was many people testifying that they were afraid to call the police because they were undocumented themselves. And so when we have police officers asking communities for their documents, whether they're witnesses or victims, it makes everyone else unsafe. It makes it where people don't wanna report things that they're seeing or they don't wanna be witnesses, or even if they're victims themselves. And so I think there is a lot to do when it comes to the city. And again, like I said earlier, we should be both leading in the state and at the federal level, representing the residents of the City of Phoenix and their best interests.
Thank you. Ms. Guevara?
Sure. Being a daughter of immigrants and having gone to my first protest in support of immigrant rights, it's something that I'm committed to, that's something that I'm passionate about. There's one thing I learned in graduate school that I'll never forget. My professor said that anyone who lives, works, goes to school in a community is part of that community no matter what, and I wholeheartedly believe that. While we're out every day talking to voters, there are people in our communities who can't vote, who play a vital role. And it's, I feel like I have a responsibility to make sure that all people feel safe in their communities, they feel like they're heard, and they feel like they can be proud of where they live. There are several ways the City of Phoenix can play a role to make that happen beyond our police department. We have a neighborhood services department that is dedicated to making sure that our neighborhoods are vibrant, that we have activities for our families, and also other community organizations. But again, I think there definitely is a mistrust between our police department and a lot of our community members, especially in West Phoenix. So it's working towards making sure that there's accountability, that any questions that our families have regarding why there's a mistrust of police, that that's being addressed. There was a study that was recently done regarding the amount of officer-involved shootings. And I know the police department is looking to do some of those recommendations, to go through those steps, to make some changes. But I definitely agree that we have a lot of work to do. And I think we, again, we have to commit to working with our state legislature and anyone who can have a say to figure out a way for comprehensive immigration reform. But that has to include our families and, again, making sure that our kids who are on DACA have access to be able to work for the city. And they have been, our current mayor, that was one of our first hires. And so to continue that, making sure that our communities and our families feel like they have access to resources as long as they're a part of our community.
Thank you. Along those same lines, how do you believe Arizona should respond to those seeking asylum at the borders? Ms. Guevara?
It's within their legal right to seek asylum, and I think that's something that we need to continue to make sure that is held to be true. There's been a lot of misinformation and a lot of illegal things done by our current administration that takes away that right from human beings. This is a human rights issue, this is a human rights crisis. But yeah, being that we're in a border town, that's definitely something that I need to commit to learning more about how cities can or can't play a role, whether that's me individually or through organizations like Puente and Carlos, the work that they're doing. They're hosting people, families, and no one knows of that, but that's something that I think should, I think the city can play a role, in addition to our churches. But I just feel like we need to use our platform and our voice to make sure that families who are forced to leave their countries for a better life need to have some resolve, some answers to be able to have their, not just, it's survival. Like, my parents were forced to leave El Salvador because of a civil war. And a lot of that, that civil war still has a negative impact in El Salvador to this day. So there's still people fleeing that country because of the actions of parties involved in that. And so I feel like we have a responsibility as a country to try to do more. So there's a lot of work to be done, but I think that's not something that can be done just through an individual city. I think we have to work with a lot of different people, legislative bodies, to make sure that people know that they have a legal right to seek asylum at the border.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
It's no secret the city was built by immigrants, and most of them undocumented. And so I think we do need to recognize that labor and that the growth of this city and the capacity that it's grown could not have happened without undocumented people who are here, who have suffered, who have been chased down by Arpaio and SB 1070. And so I think we all owe gratitude to folks who have risked their lives to be here and work hard to make sure that our society is thriving. In particular, with these asylum seekers, these are people who've already passed their credible fear. They've already gone through a process at the border, and they're actually entering a court process. And that's why they're being released in the United States. And in Phoenix, as a welcoming city that we should be, we have the opportunity to set the course for these folks who are just arriving into the country and making sure that they have a good path. They're gonna be here, they're going through their asylum process, there's a lot of city resources. And not to take away from the other needs that we have, homeless population and others, we need to take care of everyone. But also make sure that we're taking care of these folks that are seeking asylum, that have lawfully entered the country and are now on their path to gaining their documents. We need to take care of them, we need to make sure that we open up city resources to make their lives better. Again, having heard of the fourth death yesterday, these are children, two-year-olds, who are dying in cages at the border right now. We need to make sure we're taking care of these folks. We need to make sure we're taking care of these folks.
Thank you. Thank you. So let's move on to the issue of policing. There's been an increase in police shootings in the City of Phoenix. How do you think we can improve transparency and accountability in our policing, Ms. Guevara?
I addressed this earlier and I think it's important for people to have answers as to why we have the amount of officer-involved shootings. It's, when you look at who's being shot and the population of certain demographics, it's something that's very alarming and that has to be addressed. And I think the amount of shootings is a concern. It's a concern for me, it's a concern for constituents of the people I represent, and I know it's a concern for the chief. And so I think we just have to all be on the same page in terms of how we're addressing it. And I, I mean, again, I'm not an officer and I don't, I don't know, I don't have that skill. I didn't do the training, but I don't understand the concept of shooting to kill. And I'm sure there's reasons, whether that's justified or not, it's something that I need, I want to learn more about and explore. But I think there's just a lack of trust. I think our, I think police officers are expected to act as mental health providers and they're not trained to do that. So I really firmly believe that we need to invest more in services to help people. Because a good percentage of the time, from what I understand, is those involved in officer-involved shootings, it's a suicide or some form of mental health crisis. And so I think that definitely, we need to be better about investing more in services for people. Again, accountability is important. Like while we have a city manager, council, former government, I am accountable overseeing, the city manager who oversees our police department. So I think we could be better about having more community dialogue and hearing directly from the community about what safety means to them and how we address safety moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
We need to call it for what it is, it's a crisis. We had 44 shootings at the hands of Phoenix police last year. That's more than LA, New York, or Chicago, cities with way larger populations than we have. A quarter of those were in our district, in District 8. 60% of those were people of color. There's definitely a pattern that we're seeing, that those who need mental health are also the police. We need to figure out what's happening, whether it's their rebellion against the chief or whatever it is that's happening is we need to make sure to call this a crisis and treat it as a crisis and make sure we stop it. There is absolutely no reason, and we start seeing some of the families. We saw a situation like Michelle Pasos, Paco, who's a family we work with really closely on 35th Avenue in Bamburin. This mother was not getting along with her son and he was having a mental health breakdown. And she called the police for support. The police show up and they ask her to step outside their trailer park and five seconds later, he gets shot six times in the back. She then gets taken and held captive, not knowing if her son's alive or not, at a nearby dollar store until 3:00 AM. During that time, police announces that there's been an involved shooting. Four officers that were inside the trailer had cameras, but none of them were on. Happened to be on, right? They just happened to turn them off and no footage is there. And then the mother is dropped back off at 3:00 AM in the house, when the rest of the world knows what had happened to her son because it was on the evening news. And she has to walk into that trailer park that's been torn apart and just an outline of her son being in her living room. Those type of situations shouldn't be happening. And it happens again and again. And we need to treat it for what it is, a crisis. We need a citizen review board. We need those body cameras that just got paid for to have policy to make sure that they're on all the time, like they are in other cities. And in making sure that we're firing these officers. There needs to be consequences. The plea, the police union has too much power and controls the city council. Last time the chief tried to discipline some of the officers, the chief got ran out of time.
Thank you. Some of us in this room, our high school students, pondering what steps to take after graduation. Student loan debt in this country is a genuine problem. Our Arizona universities recently announced increased tuition prices for next year. What would you do to provide relief for college student loans, Ms. Guevara?
As someone who's in debt for the rest of her life due to student loans, I think that's definitely, that's definitely something that has to be reformed. There's no way, I don't understand how major million-dollar companies can get bailouts, but working families whose kids work really hard, whose parents work really hard to get to college still have to pay this debt for the rest of their lives, how that's fair? Again, at the city level, honestly, like my advice, if you have a desire to go to college, I want you to go to college, but I would also encourage you to explore so many other options. But I should, money should never be an issue to keep someone from wanting to seek higher education. But I'm also committed to making sure that there's opportunities. We have College Depot where you can apply for scholarships and apply for grants. But with regard to tuition increases, I can, I think we need to work with our state legislature and our Arizona border regions to find out if and when it's happening, how it's happening. Students could be a part of that dialogue and that process. I think, again, anyone who's directly impacted by any law or policy change meets city at the table. And I'm committed to making sure I can see that happen outside of city council. But yeah, the student debt issue is definitely something that has to be addressed. I know it's, again, it's a good chunk of my paycheck every month. And again, I don't regret having gone to college and going to law school. And I think it's helped me, it's helped my community. But looking back, if I knew at 18 what loans I was signing up for and how much it would cost me in interest rates, yeah, I think that's, it's predatory. And I think working-class families are always taken advantage of in that system.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
So this is the highest year of revenue ever in the City of Phoenix, right? And we're projected to probably have two or three more years of this height. And so I think this is the time where we can implement programs. As the City of Phoenix, I think we can provide kind of the wraparound services. We're not in the K-12, but we could definitely impact in the preschool side and in the after-school programming side. The City of Phoenix used to have one of the most robust, best after-school programs in the entire country. It was the model for the country, over 200 employees. And this program went away in 2009, last time we had, obviously, a crash. And so I think that, those programs can be brought back and those are city-funded directly. I think we couldn't be creative in the sense of, as, so some of the development and some of the things that are companies that are coming into Phoenix, a lot of times they get in exchange tax breaks. And then we get to demand certain things of them. I think demanding internships, scholarships, and employment for young folks from the city and from Arizona is something we could definitely do. And I don't know what it would look like, what a scholarship, what the City of Phoenix Scholarship Program would look like, or fellowship that then turns into a promise to come back and gain employment in the City of Phoenix. I think that's the way we invest in Phoenicians and then have those quality folks stay in Phoenix and not leave to other cities and make sure that they're working for our city.
Thank you. So we would like to ask if anybody has any questions in the audience?
Hi, my name is Brady. So I went to community college and it was actually a really amazing experience for me. It changed my life a lot. And I remember that while I was at community college in student government, they said that they zeroed out the budget, basically, that was allocated for community colleges to get any sort of state funding. So I was wondering if that would be something you'd prioritize? Maybe getting community colleges state funding again or at least working toward that kind of thing?
Again, that's not something that the City of Phoenix could directly control, but we could definitely look into finding ways. I know, I went to Florida University, my siblings went to community college, they have zero debt. And I think that's the way to seek higher education without having that financial burden. But yeah, I'm committed to figuring that out however possible. I didn't realize that there wasn't enough, that had cut all that funding for community colleges. But yeah, I'm committed to figuring it out.
Thank you so much. Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, so I'm a proud community college graduate. I had a great experience. I think unfortunately, our schools don't, a lot of our schools don't prepare us to go directly into Florida University. Again, that's, again, a state thing. I think I'll commit to lobbying. I think there's some, I would encourage folks to run for the community college board. There's a big need there.
It's you, it's you!
I'm thrilled to hear that you're doing amazing work and for, you know, reasons, for other reasons, mostly health reasons, you stepped back. And so we don't have champions in that board. I think we need to get people in there. So anybody watching, anybody here that wants to do that, that's needed. And then again, I don't know how long this growth is going to be or how we're willing to generate revenue. But a lot of cities, especially large cities across the country, do have city colleges. And figuring out what that looks like, whether it could start with one major or just start with something or a partnership with the colleges themselves. I think we need to be smart on how we use city resources. And the best way, the best thing to do with that is investing in future. And so if there's even funds that could supplement some of that mass from the city, I think we should look into it.
Thank you so much. Any other questions from the U? Are there any other questions? If not, I think that wraps up our debate. Please remember to vote this Tuesday, May 21st. Thank you all for attending this debate. And let's give our candidates a round of applause.
And for the moderator, another round of applause. Thank you tomorrow, though, for having us.